Okay.
Don't know yet. Like I said, I haven't been able to do all the research, you know, working a job in only a couple of companies. I ran short on time and was able to just present what I have tonight. But those are very good questions, exactly the questions I think we need to know.
I must be talking in my sleep or something.
You are talking in your sleep. I absorbed it.
I saw two other hands.
I've been a little looking at other cities, which I like to do to see what's going on. Hillsborough, an example, has no HR director. Urbana, the two cities I looked at, Urbana has a HR director at $50,000, and that lady does a double duty as a finance payroll officer for whatever that's worth.
I was gonna ask a question because I thought John Taylor at the Streets Committee was the trained traffic light person. He got trained, I think, 12 years ago?
John is a Level One.
Okay.
John is a Level One. I'm the only Level Two.
Okay, so he would assist her, that's a bit of a...
Yeah.
Danny, in times when you're on vacation or perhaps out ill, there is someone here that fills in for you. Is that correct?
It depends on what the problem is. The Level One can do certain items. Otherwise, they have to call somebody in for data.
Okay. And he could be certified to a Level Two if we so chose to train him that way?
Yes. Would take four more years to get him trained.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, who would handle the civil servants law if you abolish the HR? And would you abolish the commission? And who would the workers of the city be working under? Would they be working under the county or would they be working under the city or civil service?
There's a lot of questions in their county, but let me say that the Civil Service Commission cannot be abolished where statutory sit. So that is not affected by this legislation.
But doesn't that fall under the HR domain?
No. We didn't have an HR director prior to 2005. This position didn't exist. But civil service did. And it has to, as a statutory sit. So that is not at all part of this issue.
And the workers would not be with the county? I mean, would you put them all together?
The function, historically, it's been a combined function. Mr. Hunter talked about another city having HR director and what was the other one?
Payroll.
Payroll. Historically, it's been centered with an administrative assistant or executive administrative assistant prior to this. And the function was combined. You basically wore two hats in the job. And that would be the idea of, if we go back to the question of working with the HR professional at the county level, there are a number of issues that we would have to work through to understand whether or not that would be an opportunity. But in that case, that individual would form that part-time function of HR director for the city over city employees would be the concept. Now again, let me make sure that this is clear, especially for the news journal. Those discussions with the county have not taken place to understand any details that would be associated with investigating that potential cost savings. But basically, the idea would be that you would split the cost of the individual across the dimensions, and they would perform the function that way. The city of Wilmington has had an HR secretary, and will continue to have that position available. We actually do still have an HR department, I guess you would call it. It's just the executive director position that we'd be getting rid of.
That position does currently wear multiple hats and multiple positions, similar, not necessarily HR and finance like Mr. Hunter was talking about, but we have combined HR and safety.
Safety coordinator is a hat that in my mind could easily be worn and should have been worn and in fact did not exist again prior to 2005 when they created it by our city service director, whose overall of the services, safety should come from the top down into those organizations. So it's a role that again didn't exist. And in fact, I believe that was added, correct me if I'm wrong, the original approval was an HR director. Is that correct, Mr.? Okay.
Yeah.
I believe we... And then the safety coordinator role was added later and an increase in classification level, and it came along with that. Yes?
Why was such a vital position even picked to be put out there? I mean, I honestly believe that the city needs an HR person. There are just too many ends and too many details when you get into HR that we could trip up. Have to keep going to a order, have to be doing the this, you know? And that seems to me to be real expensive, but maybe I'm wrong. I want to know, what was the rationale other than, oh gee, here's another position and we could cake it and we can keep that money and it would help our budget? I mean, what was the rationale? How deeply was it looked into? I mean, Mr. Jay seemed to have a lot of information on it now, but why wasn't that done even before this whole thing happened? I mean, I'm not clear on the process. I don't really understand. If you didn't research all of this before and you put it out here as abolishing these positions, it seems to me that was a little backwards. And maybe somebody can help me?
I can let you know why I made the proposal.
Oh, all right.
As I indicated, the position of HR director did not exist prior to 2005. It was a completely created position in that year. The safety coordinator was added later. Both of the functions were being done by the city for its entire existence. Safety coordinator as a formal role, I think, is something that has come on more lately in the past several decades as workers' compensation has realized the value of specific safety programs. But the position didn't exist. It was performed by other people in the administration. Specifically, one of the reasons that I felt that we could move that back to being a part-time position is that we now have a full-time mayor. And a full-time mayor who had experience in managing a department out of the hospital and obviously in leading as a former county commissioner. With that kind of level of experience, the fact that this position had not been done prior to 2005 as an independent position and the current status of the city's finances, it just seemed like something that was a luxury. Having an independent position that only worked on that function was something that we've been for. As we face a $1.3 million deficit this year and without any structural changes to how we operate from a personnel standpoint, we would presumably face the same deficit next year and potentially one even bigger, depending on what the projected revenues are. Making the assumption that our projected revenue for this year does actually come in at the level we're anticipating, we know what our planned expenditures were, and that was the $1.3 million deficit. So I specifically look at this position...
I understand that you probably had to think ahead. You probably had to, you know, try to figure out why this was happening. I guess the question that I have is, are there other towns this large that have the mayor doing HR things?
I would like to weigh in on that question. Very good question. I'd like to preface this by putting out a title of a program that's online that was initiated by the governor of Ohio. It's a 58, I think 58-page document entitled Beyond Boundaries: A Shared Services Action Plan for Ohio Schools and Governments. And this came out this year, just this year. And it has a whole host of areas that are suggested to be areas that ought to be looked at in terms of sharing costs. And this document is sort of the heartbeat behind all of this thinking. And I want to compliment Councilman Yating. I believe that the introduction of this legislation and some of the concerns that that's raised has kind of broken a logjam that exists here in Wilmington and beyond. It exists in just about every governmental unit, every town and every municipality and including the state of Ohio. And that is this resistance to actually take a look at something and start looking at how we can change our operations. And to answer your question, towns all over Ohio are studying this document. They are making changes. But it doesn't even just stop with government entities. This is something that is happening across industry, private industry, private companies. And as I looked into this, one of the things that was more remarkable, sort of remarkable to me was, one of the areas that is being moved on and acted upon in a flight fashion among private companies is the HR position. There are a lot of inefficiencies in HR. As was pointed out during our discussion last week, there are so many changes that go on constantly with federal regulations and all that stuff, that it has caused inefficiencies in the HR functions that tend to become bigger and bigger when you are trying to hold on to the whole HR system in a small entity. Not the least of which is the software changes that have to be made that are very costly and things like that. And what the large companies and the small companies are discovering is that with HR, if they spread, if they share this across entities, they mitigate some of those rising costs in HR. Firms as large as Procter and Gamble are outsourcing HR functions to outfits that are able to make them more efficient in their overall operations. The legislation that we put for was in this spirit, and it was in part also due to a desire to break this logjam and get this thing going. And I think we've got it going now. I think that part is good. I want to emphasize that we in no way are suggesting that we will be doing away with HR functions. All the HR functions have to be present here as they would be at any, and that's very, very important. And I think that this committee would agree that in our final resolution of this, we would want to see something that's not going to take away from doing a good job with HR. We're just simply trying to push, break the logjam, push this discussion along so that we can explore all the ways that can be available to us to spread our costs across entities and save money. Because that brings me to the second reason why we're doing this. We're in a crisis situation. We've got $1.3 million deficit. We've done it one year, two year. We're into the third year. We're coming up on our budget for the next year. Our carryover is going away. And we do not want to wait until that day when we are up against the wall. Because then our room for deciding what we're going to do and how we're going to do it is going to become so limited, it will just be a, it will be a very big mess. And so, yes, this HR is big. A lot of the towns and villages are getting the HR functions handled without having an exclusive HR department with a direct. I have been, I've been looking at other cities, particularly cities close to our size and our demographics, and I'm coming up with cities that even have the service director directing HR, with people in place much like they were prior to 2005, carrying out a lot of the functions. So there's a whole multitude of things that we can look at to get the HR function done without the transition. And I do appreciate the desire to get it done right. However, I think that in the interest of keeping the pressure on and moving forward in a way that will just keep us all going, I think moving this legislation forward is vital and important. So that's why we brought it up. And there are plenty of other areas that we want to look at too, we need to look at. But I would urge everybody, all the council members, people in the community, to look at this document. I'll read one little paragraph from it. It says, "The magnitude of fragmented nature of Ohio's government structure creates..."
How about holding it down? I'm trying to listen to the councilman.
"...it creates inherent inefficiencies in service delivery or back office functions as well as direct services to citizens. These inefficiencies add an additional burden of local taxes and make it more difficult for citizens and businesses to interact with government. In a state with a very high tax burden and just recently recovering from a $7.7 billion deficit shortfall, now is not the time to raise taxes. Nor rather, it is time for state and local leaders to think creatively, challenge the status quo, and find new ways to deliver services." That's the spirit in which this legislation is being put for, and I think it's important to continue to move along. And obviously, as we've discussed in the past, on this particular piece of legislation, the mayor has veto power. And if that's what he chooses to do, fine, if he's not satisfied with where we are at that point in time. But I certainly would urge that we continue to move forward, and we continue to look at all these items with a view to not having to face, you know, having to go after more taxes and/or sacrifice services.
So you're recommending this and no revenue?
Thank you, Senator.
You're recommending this type of approach, but no new revenue, no new taxes. Is that what you're saying?
The purpose of this is to avoid any new taxes, get the job done with the revenue that we have coming in to us right now. That's the spirit in which this legislation is being offered and recommended at this time.
Can you pinpoint where there is excess money here that could be cut? Can you point out specifically in the study that you want to be done, where you're going to save?
That will depend on where it takes us. For instance, if we ended up being able to share HR, some HR functions with the county, then that would provide efficiencies, that would provide savings right there for probably both them and us.
So you feel that the HR is inefficient right now in Wilmington?
I think it's inefficient right now, and I believe it gets more inefficient by the day due to the pressures that come to bear with the continuing changes made in HR functions. Yes, I would definitely think that's...
But you're never going to be able to stop the outside forces of HR functions, just like we can't control our taxes in some way if the government chooses to raise our taxes?
I'm not sure.
Well, you're not truly grasping what's being done, I don't feel, in my opinion. Because you cannot control what the future is going to bring.
Well, we know this much in terms of, in terms of the specific subject of HR. Every time our Congress meets up in Washington, we get another stack of regulations that has to be incorporated into software. And the software companies build us. And if we have our own exclusive unit, we're going to bear all those costs. And that would be one area that is your strength.
As a school teacher, you know this. I mean, we get everything down.
That's right. Well, and the schools are actually much farther along in following the spirit of this than our government entities are. And the private sector is ahead of everybody. So, you know, it's a process and it's a thinking outside the box type activity that we've got to get moving.
I would just caution, slow down. Just don't be, just don't go so fast.
Yeah. Well, and I appreciate that. But when I hear that, I think about the voices that were here to start moving this logjam as early as 2010, and it just wasn't moved. 2011, it just wasn't moved. 2012, it hasn't been moved. 2013 is probably the last chance we had to solve the problem. And so, from that perspective, you have to understand that's why this committee wants to push and promote and bring about any kind of action that's positive that we possibly can. We don't want to let up now. I don't think it's time to back off and start a six-month study or something like that. You've got to study as we're going. That's what we're going to have, that's what we're going to have to do.
Councilman Stotter.
Yeah. Does your committee have other plans to bring forward additional cost-saving ideas that they're about to...
The, and then again, we haven't had a committee where we've had a broad discussion on that. But I do know that individual members and certainly myself have looked, have and are continuing to look every day at a whole bunch of things. And from my perspective, from what I see, I am more convinced now than I was in January or even last July, I'm more convinced now that we can live within our budget in this city. We can find ways. Because I'm seeing things that I'm not prepared to talk about right now. I'm seeing things that are being done, including, you know, one of the problems, for instance, that we had with this sharing, just as one example, was a lot of red tape between governmental units. You couldn't do, you had, you know, so many questions to be asked. The legislature passed a brand-new law that is designed, and I've been looking at it, I'm not sure I understand it perfectly. But this law is designed to enable us to cut through red tape and get some shared responsibilities between governmental units that we could not get done before. So if we're getting help from the State House, we're getting help up and down the line. And I really do believe that the ball is moving back. And I'm confident, yes, I'm confident that in 2013, we can have a budget that matches our revenue without asking for additional taxes from people. And you couple that with the fact that I honestly believe that when you have tied your revenue to our citizens' incomes and you've tied your revenue to the value of our citizens' property, that you have to be prepared for your revenue to go down when their income goes down and the values of their homes go down. And you have to also understand that someday in the future, incomes are going to go up and property values are going to go up and our revenue will go up. So we have to be able to do as a governmental unit much whatever business in this entire country has to do. And that is, you got to go with, you have to go with the waves that come and go. We cannot sit here and be in trance and say, well, your incomes went down, I know. Now your home went down, I know. But we don't have enough to run governments, so we're going to have to raise the rates on your income and put more property taxes on your property. To me, that just doesn't make sense, and I don't believe it makes sense to the people that are moving. As I said last week, and I'll say it over and over, many times we get stuck with saying, all we need is this little bit more. It's just $300 for every $100,000 value on your home. Well, to a property owner, it's not just $300. It's in addition to all the other things that we pay. You know, we are putting, we are in the margins. And if you're a businessperson, you know that you can't just keep pushing the margins even by a dollar or two. And I think that's what we're up against. And that's the spirit in which we offer this. I know that have been a lot of voices raised at this, and there's been some perception that this is just something that's been dropped in there like a bombshell with no preparation, no thought. Believe me, I'm not, I'm talking in my sleep and that's probably right. I mean, and I assume that I have a teacher in the crowd. And, you know, we have some time in the summertime, and I spent all day long for day after day after day examining things online and printing out what I can, trying to understand this. I know that members of this council have too. I know in particular that our president has. And this is not something that's just been, we're just throwing things up against the wall. We're thinking this through, and we're not trying to, we're not trying to blow our city out of the water. We want to keep our services the same. We want to be able to keep our government as close to the same as we possibly can. But the only way realistic that we're going to be able to do that is if we find creative ways outside the box to resolve some of these financial issues and still keep getting the job done. So that's the spirit in which all this is offered.
Just a couple items, Lauren. It's $35 a year per mill, about $300 minus. And the state hasn't done us any favors in the sense that they've balanced their budget, that shoved the cost down to the cities. And they're not done doing that yet. So there's a revenue problem. The state taxes are gone, personal property taxes are gone, the local state funds are gone or reducing. So we've taken a pretty good hit from our revenue stream from that. That's why my personal position is to give the voters, as you know, I told you this, give the voters a voice in this, by allowing them to vote yes or no on a tax. You're not, you can't impose a tax on the citizens. They choose to, yes, I want 502 or whatever age you may be, or I'll live with them to have a balanced budget. So I, as you know, that's my position.
Yeah, I understand and I appreciate that, Paul. I think to explain my position is that I am a true believer in the idea that we can make this thing work. So that's why I'm being resolute this way on that particular item. So, you know, when all's said and done, somebody's going to be right, somebody's going to be wrong. But from my perspective and as representing the committee on this piece of legislation right now, I want to keep moving. And that's why.
Mr. Jay, I assume your figures on salaries included benefits, just by way of...
Yes, well...
Except for the last one.
Except for the last one. That is correct.
And your point is that we could leave the positions empty and achieve the same results financially as abolishing them for all time in the future?
Of the first two, that is correct.
Yes, okay. I'm a little concerned that it's so much easier to measure effectiveness, I'm sorry, so much easier to measure efficiency as compared to effectiveness. And I wonder if there isn't a full-time job for the human relations person in terms of the added expenditures and perhaps the software could be shared between, the cost could be shared between the county and the city without having to thin things out so much. I just don't know. But I'm reminded that effectiveness is, you know, how fast you do it. It's so much easier to measure with a stopwatch than is it being done right? And I hope the committee pays equal attention to both.
And do we though, is it very important?
Can I point out something? What software do you use in your office other than Microsoft Word?
My software is connected to CMI, which is in the payroll department. So that's what we use. We use a combination of payroll and HR. I don't have a separate HR system that I buy. We use what we have.
Just clarify, because all the stuff I do as a department head, I have to do on payroll. So just clarify so we know there is no software associated with HR.
No.
Well, I'm not suggesting we analyze the software.
He just said that it was a huge expense. He just said it was a huge expense and that it would have to be, that's why we have to share.
That's an example of why your outfits like your companies and other governmental units are part of the reasoning behind. I use that as an example. There could be, there are dozens of things that we like to bring forth using examples. Any one of them may or may not apply in our particular case. But I assure you that the art behind this is there are deficiencies in fact. And I do agree with the gentleman that we don't want to give up effectiveness. But just, like I said, I'm struck by, as I look at this, the speed with which the people... But I just, like I said, I'm struck by, as I look at this, the speed with which the people who have to watch the bottom line every day analyze these things and make changes compared to the governmental units, which have a tendency, we have inertia in government. We have, we don't want to give up, you know, we have a lot of little centers there and I'm not pointing fingers, I'm just saying it's a fact of life. We have a lot of little centers of power and things like that that create inertia and they stifle creative thinking and they don't encourage outside the box.